Welcome, everybody. This is the, I'm calling to order, the Board of Education meeting. It is Monday, March 28th. It is 6:05 PM. We are in the Nashville North Boardroom. Jess Brown is going to be filling in for Clerk tonight. Can you please do the roll call?
Certainly. Christina Darling here. Neil Claffey?
Here.
Sharon Gilio?
Here.
Heather Raymond is not present. Reagan Lampier?
Here.
Jessica Brown is here. Sandra Zeeem not present. Paula Johnson?
Present.
Jennifer Bishop?
Here.
We also have in a present Mr. Donovan, Ms. Carey, Dr. McKinney, and Dr. Searfley. Also, we have Sameh Sahu and Armani Rogers.
I hear it's DJ Armani Rogers.
Yeah.
You can do whatever you want. He was the DJ at the kids' dance on Friday night. Can you do the prayer, Ms. Brown?
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and clarity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen. Ms. Lampier, will you lead us in the pledge?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I liked hearing all the voices. This is exciting. So tonight, speaking of all of the lovely kids in the audience, we have New Surles here to do a presentation. So I'd like to introduce the principal, Ms. Talbot, who I guess colloquially is Princess Talbot. Queen. And Tricia Kaufman is with you, right? Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for having us this evening.
Thank you.
I am the proud principal of New Surles, and this is my
Assistant Principal, Tricia Kaufman. Okay. I'm here with many, many students. And Mr. Chuck Vorius is going to introduce a program that's been at New Surles for several years, probably more than 20 years, that we're extremely proud of. So without further ado, Mr. Vorius, who's our guidance counselor.
Hi. My name's Chuck Vorius. I'm the school counselor at New Surles Elementary. I've been at New Surles for 21 years. I think we've had the peer mentor program there for about 20. And every year, we get great kids, because we have great families at New Surles, and this is, this year's no exception. We have some awesome peer mentors helping out this year. I think we have 17 kids in the program this year. And the peer mentor program is for 5th grade kids to give back to the school. They help out in a bunch of different ways. They, you know, they help out kids with academics. They help kids go to specialists. They help kids at recess. Anywhere where a kid needs help, the mentors are more than happy to help out. They've been awesome this year. And I'm going to let the peer mentors introduce themselves, tell a little bit about what they do. And then a couple of the peer mentors are going to talk in detail about their daily duties and how they've been helping kids out at New Surles this year. So I'm going to introduce Kathy Cornwall. She's a 5th grade teacher at our school. And she's going to help with the introductions, or I can help you with that too if you want.
Sure.
So if you guys do want them to come up?
I'm going to walk around here.
Okay. I want you guys to stand up. The mentors come up.
Hello, my name's Anthony, and I work in kindergarten.
My name is Jordan, and I also work in kindergarten.
My name is Kenley, and I work in Mrs. Wirtowski's room.
Hi, my name is Owen, and I work in kindergarten.
Hi, my name is Sierra, and I work in kindergarten.
Hi, my name is Zinna, and I work in 3rd grade.
Hi, my name is Garrett, and I work in 3rd grade.
Hi, my name is Molly, and I work in kindergarten.
Hi, my name is Addison, and I work in kindergarten.
Hi, my name is Olivia, and I work in 4th grade.
Hi, my name is Kellen, and I work in kindergarten.
So we'd like to introduce now two of our 5th grade mentors. We have Molly Hickey, and we have Ms. Addison Baldassaro. And she's, they're going to talk a little bit about what they do, what their participation is, and then we'll introduce the little ones that they work with.
Hi, my name is Molly.
Hi, my name is Addison.
Oh.
To become a peer mentor, we had to write a small essay about our skills and what we could help the younger kids with. And we wrote how we could use our skills to help the younger kids.
To be a peer mentor, you have to have a lot of patience with the kids, because if you don't have enough patience with them, they won't be able to learn anything. Sometimes you have to be very creative, too. Like, if you're working with them, sometimes we work with their, we do their flashcards with them. And if they don't recognize a word, we have to be creative and think of something that will help them understand better.
Every two days or so, we used to go to meet with Mr. V just after recess to go to lessons on peer mentoring, such as dealing with a problem, patience with kids, or just how to mentor younger kids.
He would show us how to connect with kids and, yeah.
Sometimes we will point to words on their sightword wall, and we will have them say the words to us. And sometimes we will help them sound out a letter and a word that they need help with, such as like TH.
I work in kindergarten. I go in the morning to Mrs. DeMayo's class. And I also work on Thursday afternoons with Mrs. DeMayo's classes.
I work with kindergarten and 4th grade. In kindergarten, I normally just do sightwords with them. And in 4th grade, I, we will have the 4th graders read to us.
Here are some of the kids that we work with.
You can introduce them?
Here's Mason and Tally.
Hi, my name's Nathan Mason, and I like when the 5th graders do my sightwords with me, because it helps me learn a little bit more better. And I just like, like them. And they're nice to me. And they're very, very nice. And I like them a lot, because they're, they're nice to me. And they do my sightwords, and if I get stuck on one, they help me. And also, they help me count to 100. That's another thing that they do, too.
Hey, my name is Tally. I like when the 5th graders help me with my cards, and they're nice to me, and they help us with our work.
Hi, I'm Mrs. DeMayo, their teacher for kindergarten. And as you can see, our peer mentor program has a very positive effect on New Surles. The younger kids look up to the older kids as role models. They get so excited when they come into our classrooms, and they are really excited to practice their words, or letters, or their counting, or whatever we're working on. This year, we haven't been able to have volunteers in our classrooms. Now we can. But for most of the year, we couldn't, and we really had to rely on them to help us out. And they definitely came through. So thank you to the peer mentors for helping us, and thank you all for having us here tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. And I was noticing there were parents who wanted to get pictures of their kids who kept facing this way. If you guys want to stand up and turn around so your parents can get a picture of you, Thank you, guys. Well, that was great. Thank you for being such a big part of your school community. You guys are more than welcome to stay for the rest of this super boring meeting, or you can go.
Before they leave, can I just say something to them real quick?
Yeah.
No, never mind.
Elon. Is that okay? Elon?
That was the best.
I'm glad to hear they were very nice.
All right, so while everybody is filtering out.
Oh, no, I'm still here.
That's okay. You can be the last man standing. So I would be looking for, I'm going to move on in the agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Any seconds?
Second.
Okay, we do have Ms. Gilio on the phone. Ms. Gilio, are you by yourself? Sorry.
Can you hear us, Sharon?
Yep, I'm fine.
Can you, are you in the room by yourself?
I am by myself, yes.
Okay. I know we asked in the first meeting, but we didn't ask this time. Does anybody have any objection to Ms. Gilio being here over the phone? She is under the weather tonight.
No.
Okay.
Who was the second for that?
Ms. Lampier? You seconded.
I'm the second. That's me. I seconded.
So we have to do roll call, because Ms. Gilio's on the phone, so Ms. Brown, whenever you're ready.
Ms. Darling?
Aye.
Ms. Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Are you in favor of the consent agenda?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, yeah.
Is that right? Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown votes no. Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Motion passes. Five to two.
Okay, moving on. Any items removed or communications outside of the consent agenda to add? Nope. Okay, so first public comment, period. Mr. Claffey, would you mind?
There's something on there.
Nobody signed up for first public comment? All right. Are you sure?
I'm very sure.
Okay. Okay. And also, before, before we go into public comment, which I know there's nobody, but before the superintendent's comments, I did want to take a minute to just do a moment of silence. We had a middle schooler who passed over the weekend due to ongoing medical complications. I was just hoping we could take a second and just reflect on what an amazing loss that is for the family and for our community, and just take a minute to honor the ones Thank you all for participating in that with me. I appreciate it. We'll move on now to the superintendent's comments.
Good evening, everyone. Two things this evening. First, congratulations to the Nashville High School South Destination Imagination Team for placing third in the D1 finals last weekend at South Heagan High School in Amherst. The Delusional Dinos, the team solved the improvisational challenge, which is all about spontaneity and storytelling. Specifically, the team solved this year's challenge titled Festival Frenzy. The team involved researching festivals worldwide and developing a two act skit with the festival providing the context and the background. The Dinos team members are Krishna Doni, Trisha Prakarash, Deetya Nagri, and they're all sophomores. And their team managers are Priya Varma and Devia Nagri. The core members of this team have been together for several years, as far back as their days as students at the old Maine Dunstable Elementary School. And together, they have stayed connected through DI and this year through the pandemic and virtual practices. So congratulations to the Delusional Dinos from South. The second, the school district is hiring. We're hosting a job fair, and we're anticipating openings in a variety of areas and certifications. Please join us on Tuesday, April 19th, from 3:30 to 6:00 PM at Nashville High North. Vacancies will be posted on our website as they become available. So if you're a job seeker, I hope you'll consider attending, and we hope to see you then. Thank you.
Excellent. Now we have the board's response to the superintendent comments. I'll just go around the horseshoe. Mr. Claffey? No comment? Ms. Lampier? Ms. Johnson?
No.
I also have no comments, but love the name Delusional Dinos. That's right up my alley. Ms. Darling?
Improv is like at the heart of my soul. I love improv so much, so I'm super excited to hear that. And for our New Surles, Searl, I cannot speak tonight. For our mediators that were here, I am blown away by their compassion for others and the interest in making our community better through such a wonderful example for both the peers and the kids that are looking up to them. How many kids at that age do you guys remember, like, having enough together to help mediate a situation? So I'm also super happy to hear that they were very nice.
Thank you. Ms. Brown?
No comments.
Okay. Now onto the student member of the board comments.
I have no comments except for on the matters of the calendar, or if I should speak about that later.
We'll be talking about that later. You can join in with questions and comments when that comes up on the agenda. And we welcome your questions and comments anytime during the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Sahu?
Thank you. I just wanted to say good evening, and right, thank you to all the peer mentors who are here earlier from New Surles. I, oh no, I wish I was in elementary school again. But they, you could really see that the, the impact that they had on their younger students, and it warmed my heart, and I think it warmed everyone's heart. And additionally, congratulations to Nashville South's Destination Imagination Team, as well as our Science Olympiad Team, who placed second in their regional competition over the weekend. So as usual, go South.
Thank you, guys. So we did, we had our committee on budget last Wednesday. We will have another meeting this Wednesday. And then soon enough, we'll be presenting the whole budget to be sent off to the alderman, hopefully. So we're coming to the end of that. Next up, we have the Committee on Finance and Operations. Ms. Johnson, I will hand it over to you.
Thank you. We met, what day was it? Last Thursday, I think it was?
The 17th.
The 17th. Sorry, it was St. Patty's Day, and I wore blue. I said, we're going to change everything to blue instead of green. It was a great meeting. So I'm going to make a recommendation to approve the Harriman Proposal for Architectural and Engineering Services at Nashville High School South, North Gym dated February 8th, 2022, in the amount not to exceed $1,350,000, funding from plant operations account 91.1.22.2620.54280.
Second. Just need to go into it. Just need to go into it. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Brown votes yes. Unanimous, motion passes.
Second. Recommendation to award the contract to Dean's Carpet One in the amount not to exceed $15,603.75, funding from plant operations account 91.1.22.2620.54280, building and grounds maintenance.
Second. Ms. Darling?
Actually, sorry. I keep forgetting, because I assume in committee meetings, people come if they have questions, but that's not always the case. So is there any discussion on these? No? Okay. I figured we all read the packet. Okay, continue on.
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Unanimous, pass.
Okay, next one is recommendation to award the three-year contract to New England Sports Floor for one coat of the NHSS gym floor in an amount not to exceed $17,819 per year, funding from plant operations account 91.1.22.2620.53628, contract services.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
Thanks. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommendation to award a contract to Northern Innovations for replacement of bathroom partitions in Maine Dunstable Elementary School in amount not to exceed $21,650, funding from plant operations account 91.1.22.2620.54280, buildings and grounds maintenance.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Brown.
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommend to approve the contract with TNT for fiber panel and cable upgrades in the amount of $179,995 from funding from FY23 Budget Contract Services 91.1.99.222553628.
Second.
Any discussion? That one sounds explosive.
Oops. I just put that in the wrong spot. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Last one. Recommendation to approve FY22 February Transfer Report as presented at the 31722 FNO meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Brown.
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I just want to say one thing, Ms. Bishop.
Yeah.
We have a great committee. We get along, and we just do the work that needs to be done. And it's all great in that committee. And I want to thank Mr. Donovan, because he brings it to us, and he really explains everything great. Thank you, Mr. Donovan.
Oh, I believe between you and Mr. Donovan, no penny goes unaccounted for and, and ill-spent. So if there are two people at the helm of anything that I'm just like, I'll go blind into that.
We negotiate good.
We're good negotiators here, aren't we, Mr. Donovan?
Very good. Okay, so the Committee on Policy. Ms. Darling, I hear you're presenting on behalf of Ms. Raymond.
I was told that Paula was.
Are you doing it?
Doesn't matter. We can do it. Okay, here we go again.
Okay.
Recommendation to approve policy IMDA, silent meditation, pledge of allegiance, and patriotic exercises.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Brown.
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
And motion passes.
Recommendation to rescind policy 2212, free exercise of religion.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lampier. Any discussion on the rescinding? Mr. Claffey?
Could I just, could we just get a brief summary of this change?
So it updates, let's go to where it is. Well, actually, I mean, the policy committee's here. Why don't you guys update on it? Let me grab the word.
Okay, let me, I think I have it in my packet. We, this is one of the policies that we were supposed to do the last time. And Ms. Raymond, all we did was combine, really, 2212, and just added another paragraph, I think it was.
Yep.
Let me see if I can find my, here it is.
Yeah, it was a big packet this week. So many financials in there.
I don't think I have it. It, we just, it was a combination of this original policy 2212, and I think we broke it down more into paragraphs, so it was easier to read and understand.
The only additions I'm, like, seeing in here are wording, things like, "There shall be no prescribed or proscribed form or content of prayer," so basically saying that staff cannot influence students, whereas in the original, it was much more general.
Thank you.
Yes. And I didn't have it in the last packet that I brought. Next one is recommendation to approve policy.
Oh, no, we have to vote on the rescinding.
Oh, sorry.
Forgot that the question was asked.
On the motion, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond? Oh, sorry, Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown votes yes. Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
And Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, now recommendation to approve policy GBEBE, employment of relatives or persons with romantic personal relationships. And I will say that this was one that we sent back. I believe we had to add some more words to it. If I may ask Ms. Carney to please brief us on this because of, it was sent back, do you remember?
Sure. The biggest changes in this policy here were adding, we adopted the policy from the NHSBA, and the biggest change is employment of relatives or persons with romantic personal relationships. So it's pretty much been adopted from the NHSBA.
This way, if I have it, I'll just, a couple of ones that I think questions will come up on. I'll ask to get a brief explanation.
That's fine.
There's a couple more.
I appreciate that. Did you get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommendation to rescind policy
Yes.
Ms. Brown votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommendation to rescind policy 8220 Related Employees.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lamphier. Any discussion on this? No? Okay.
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gillio?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommendation to approve GCG Substitute Teachers. Does anybody want to have a little brief discussion on that?
Do we have to rescind the other one first?
We just rescinded 822. Did we rescind 8220? Or did I skip over that already?
I might have skipped.
That's next.
Yeah, it goes GCG first, and then we'll rescind policy 8227.
Okay, I was right. Sorry. That's okay. Did anybody want a brief explanation on that?
Do you want to get a motion on the table first?
Oh. Recommendation to approve policy GCG Substitute Teachers. I thought I did that.
We need a second.
Second.
Did Ms. Lamphier second that?
Yes.
Sorry. Okay, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Lamphier. And Mr. Claffey. And Ms. Darling. All right. On the motion, Ms. Darling?
I think Ms. Johnson wanted to give a little summary of it. I was wondering if it fell in line with the new temp agency that we hired to support the substitute teachers. Ms. Carey?
Sure, I'm happy to speak on that. There weren't a whole lot of changes to the policy. It was really just changing GED to a high school diploma or equivalent. We changed certified to credentialed. So there were minor changes. We were, the, under Section 4, the only change that we added was adding department or contracted services because it does have buckets of the different types of subs. So most of the policy still would hold true, and we just added contract services language in the policy.
Okay.
She explains it much better than I could.
I could listen to her talk about policy all day.
I know.
That's my favorite thing.
She's good at what she does.
Are you writing all of the motions down?
Briefly.
Do you know that they're in bold above, they're already written down?
I'm jotting things down. I'm good.
All right. Let's see, on the menu, or I'm sorry, on the motion?
You're ordering food now?
All right. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gillio?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yep.
And motion passes.
Recommendation to rescind policy 8227 About One Substitute Teachers.
I'll second it.
All right. Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gillio?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Recommendation to approve proposed policy GADA Employment References and Verification Prohibiting Aiding and Abetting of Sexual Abuse.
I'll second it.
This is another one that we sent back, right? Because there were some words in it that we wanted to clarify?
No.
Or was that the other one?
I'll see.
Fantastic.
Does anybody have any questions about this policy?
All right, Ms. Darling?
I abstain.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gillio?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes, sorry.
Ms. Brown votes no. Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Motion passes. Four yeses, two noes, one abstention.
Recommendation to approve policy GBEC Drug-Free Workplace Drug-Free School Zones.
I'll second.
I think that's self-explanatory.
We're against that, right? Okay. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Brown.
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gillio?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Motion passes. And actually, the previous motion, I did not write down who seconded it. Was that Ms. Lamphier?
Yeah.
Thank you. I apologize.
Recommendation to approve policy ADC Tobacco Products in and on School Facilities and Grounds. Again, self-explanatory.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Lamphier. Any discussion? Mr. Claffey?
This doesn't apply to adults, does it? Staff in the building, teachers?
It should. You're not supposed to smoke on school grounds at all, are you? I think it's also that you're not supposed to have it in your product. Like, you're not supposed to have it on you.
I'm not suggesting people should be able to smoke, but if an adult has a pack of cigarettes in their pocket, is that banned, prohibited?
In the schools? I bet Dr. McKinney knows that answer. Because that would mean you can't have it in your car, you can't have it in your purse, you can't have it in your pocket.
That's a good question.
I feel like that's one of those things that most reasonable people would be able to assume in the moment that it's, if it is actively lit and being smoked, but...
All district employees are encouraged to follow district policy.
Okay.
You're welcome to take up smoking, but just not on school grounds. He's not a school district employee. That's a whole nother matter.
I just meant possession.
So to be clear, it is okay to have a pack of cigarettes in, like, your car in the parking lot?
We're not going into the parking lot and policing people for that, but I would caution people, that's where you get into a gray area, and the odds are, if you're carrying such a thing, you're using those things. So I wouldn't do that on school grounds.
I appreciate that answer.
Okay. Ms. Brown, if you want to do the roll.
For the record, I actually do want to make a comment on this. Thanks to Mr. Claffey's observation, you know, I think that we should make clear policies. I do not support the use of tobacco products of any kind. However, I do think if an adult has something in their car, and I recognize that there's really no way to enforce something like that, but I do think we should have our policies that are enforceable. So I will be voting no for that reason. Not because I advocate the use of tobacco.
Thank you for clarifying.
All right. Excuse me, just to clarify, this policy talks about the use of any tobacco product, e-cigarette or liquid nicotine in any facility. So it's the use of.
So not possession, just use.
An unlit cigarette is not being used.
Yeah.
For non-smokers.
All right. Okay.
Got a question now. Thank you, Mr. Claffey, for bringing this up. So we're talking about use of. But if somebody, if a student has a possession on them with an e-cigarette or any of that, what happens?
Well, the first paragraph covers that. Students and minors are further prohibited from possessing such items in or upon any facility, school vehicle, or grounds owned or maintained by the district. So both of those are covered in the first paragraph of that policy.
Thank you. I forgot from a week ago. Okay, so does that satisfy everybody now?
And they're not supposed to have them under 18 anyway.
Right. But that doesn't...
Did it change to 21? In Nashua? I forgot about that. No, it's not.
Yeah, it is.
I am so far past 21 that that stuff comes up, and I'm like, doesn't matter to me.
All right. Are you ready? Oh.
So for staff, what is the consequence for...
We don't discuss personnel matters at a full board meeting, and I would caution the board in general of tempering your comments because any employees or past employees that were subject to discipline, your comments could unravel discipline that has been put in place. So I would advise you to direct your questions to the policy itself in black and white. Any revisions you want to make, I would send them back to policy. Thank you.
Is there any revisions that we want to make?
I think it's pretty clear.
I'm kind of wondering if it might be worth another discussion with this new observation in policy. Just, I mean, just one more run-through wouldn't hurt it. I don't know. I would support if it went back to policy for one more check-through.
Well, how about if it doesn't pass, it goes back to committee?
All right.
Mr. Dr. McKinney?
So just to clarify, we've kind of gone around. What exactly is the policy missing, just so we can ascertain whether it's in there or not?
It sounds like if staff can have tobacco products unused but on them, on school property.
So it's more than likely that it's happened in the past. I'm not aware of a situation where somebody was disciplined for possession. It is the act that is in compliance with the policy that would be a violation.
And I would think if a teacher, like, had it in their bag or, like, visible to students, that it's more of an ethical chit-chat than a tobacco use policy. So I think if we look at all of the policies as a whole, all of our concerns are probably found there. And just to add, as our resource, again, we adopted the policy from the NHSBA, which has their legal team vet this out. So it definitely is in compliance.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Brown, please do the roll.
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
I'm going to abstain.
Ms. Gillio?
I'm going to also abstain because it's very difficult to hear what you're all saying on the telephone. In fact, I may have to come, put my glasses on, and come to the meeting with my black eye and scare everybody because it is really, really difficult to hear what's being said. I don't understand it enough, so I need to abstain.
Point of order, Madam President. Abstention, why are we abstaining? There's no conflict of interest. So can we abstain, or can we just vote present? There's a whole black area, gray and white here about, you know, abstaining. Is there a conflict of interest why we're going to abstain? If we're going to abstain, why are we abstaining? Are we going to vote present? I mean, if in fact we have questions on this, then let's send it back to the committee rather than abstaining, and let's get the questions answered. If we need to go into a non-public to discuss anything that might deal with personnel, then let's do that. But by abstaining here, can it come back to haunt us because there is no reason, there's no conflict? From what I understand about abstaining, there's a conflict of interest usually.
Well, I think Ms. Gillio is abstaining because she can't hear.
I understand that.
So I would actually recommend if Ms. Gillio is having a hard time participating in the meeting, we have a quorum here. If you want to excuse yourself if the connection is bad, I don't know how to make that better for you. But I think her abstention is fine, and I don't think it's appropriate for us to ask Mr. Claffey what his conflict of interest might be in case it has to do with...
I think I would rather, yeah, just sign off from the phone. And because I am watching it on TV, but because of the delay, I can't leave the TV sound on when you're taking roll calls and votes. So if you do have a quorum, then I think I will excuse myself from the meeting because I don't want to interfere with progress. And I will watch the rest of the meeting, and I will come to our next meeting whether I have a black eye or not.
Well, we hope you feel better and you heal soon.
Yeah.
Thank you. Goodbye, everybody.
Bye. Thank you, Ms. Gillio.
Bye.
It's not that I really want to find out why he's abstaining, but usually there's a conflict of interest.
I respond. I'll be happy to change my vote to present.
You know. But I'm thinking that if there's questions about this, that maybe we should just send it back to the committee and get some more details on it.
Well, I think at this point, it's, if Mr. Claffey has a question, Ms. Johnson has a question, Ms. Brown has a question, that kind of puts us at a 3-3 vote anyway, so we might as well just send this back to committee.
Hey, I'll make a motion.
I was going to say, procedurally, we should finish the vote and, or table it.
Somebody can take their motion off the table.
Yeah. I didn't vote yet, so I can't take my motion off the table.
You did vote yet, what?
I didn't vote. I haven't voted yet.
No, I know. So we can just say, you can take your motion off the table.
Right. I'm going to, I'll make the motion to just send it back to committee right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you can withdraw your motion.
Withdraw my motion, yep. Sorry about that.
And you want to make a motion to send it back to committee.
Right.
Does Ms. Lamphier withdraw her second?
Yes.
Okay. The motion was withdrawn. Would you like to change the motion, or we're just going to, or would you like to send it back to committee, Madam President?
Yeah, we can just do that. I don't think it needs a vote.
That's what I'm saying. All right. Okay.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, do you want to go to the next one?
Sure. Do we need to take a vote on this to send it back to committee?
No.
Okay. Just making sure. Recommendation to approve proposed policy DAF Administration of Federal Grants Funds as amended. And I'm just going to ask Mr. Donovan to give a brief overview of this because it was very lengthy, and so people understand.
It was a very long one.
Yes, this is probably our largest policy.[1573.32]
And basically, it's required as part of our involvement with federal grants. Once again, we use the New Hampshire School Board Association. We were audited in the fall and they came in and a number of our policies were either not full policies but procedures, or there were a couple that we didn't have. So they gave us a checklist, we reviewed all those. And basically what we did was we, this is, if you look at this policy, there's like 10 different sub-policies to it. So we took most of the NS School Board language, New Hampshire School Board language, we added some of ours from our other policies and then created this.
Does anybody have any questions on the presented policy? Ms. Brown?
I only had one question regarding, it fell under federal grants, which had some stipulations that we had to be in compliance with some different qualifications and like Davis Bacon wages and that kind of thing. Or there was like a wage management question. I'm sorry, I should have rolled that scroll. I didn't scroll down far enough to find it yet. Does that affect us only on federal grants or does that mean we have to apply this and we're looking for local bids as well?
Yeah, the Davis Bacon, that would just be on federal grants.
Okay, and then some of the...
And that's mostly construction type work, so there will be construction work done using ESAR. Most of our other grants, we don't do that sort of work.
Okay. So if we're here locally, if we need to hire someone, we don't necessarily, we can still get bids from our local vendors or...
Yes, unless it's a construction job using ESAR funds, it has to have Davis Bacon. But Davis Bacon is a minimum price. A lot of the work in the Nashua area probably qualifies under Davis Bacon.
Okay.
It's if we were to use firms from further up in the state and...
All right. I just don't want to tie our hands from a financial standpoint.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Ms. Brown?
Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Lamphier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown votes yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Oh, on the next round, we can just say all in favor.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
Recommendation to approve policy DA Fiscal Resource Management. Let's you.
Seconded.
Thank you, Ms. Lamphier. Discussion, questions? Seeing none. Ms. Brown, can you, oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Recommendation to approve policy DDA Non-Federal Grant Funds Materials and Services.
Questions, comments, concerns? Ms. Lamphier? Oh, are you seconding?
I was just going to second it.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Oops, sorry. Okay. Ms., oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Recommendation to approve policy DID Inventory Management. DID.
Seconded.
Thank you. Discussion, questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Recommendation to approve policy DJ Purchasing.
Seconded.
Thank you. It's a lot of overlap with finance tonight, huh? Policy and finance? Okay. On the motion to approve policy DID, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on.
Recommendation to approve DJB Purchasing Procedures.
Thank you. Questions, discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Recommendation to approve policy DKC Expense Reimbursements.
Seconded.
Thank you, Ms. Lamphier. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next policy.
Recommendation to approve policy DKC-R Appendix Expense Reimbursement Procedures.
Questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I just want to say, our director of HR, she's done a great job and everything she's, this is really a lot of work for her to do and my hat is off to her for doing all this. Thank you.
Yes. Kudos, Ms. Carey. Okay, Committee on Curriculum and Evaluation. Ms. Brown?
Okay, so we met on March 23, 2022, and we've got a few motions from that evening. So I moved to accept the quotes from Bedford, Freeman, and Worth to purchase AP textbooks in the amount of $76,699.42 funded by fiscal year '22 curriculum operating budget.
I'll second.
Mr. Claffey, I've got you as the second and Jessica Brown. All right, all in favor?
I actually have a question about this. Do these new textbooks have the option of being electronic?
So these textbooks are twofold. One, they were selected to replace some of the books that we lost as a result of COVID-19 and students being out of school. And then additionally, these are the updated versions. Some of these textbooks are the updated versions of the books that students already have. Do they have the, I'm not sure if they have the option of being electronic or not. I honestly can't tell you that. I will say that in my experience, the subscriptions for electronic textbooks are very, very costly. And, you know, obviously there is a timeframe. There's a lot with those subscriptions. So being able to have these books means that we would have them for longer, but I can't tell you if these particular books are offered through a subscription.
Okay.
One last thing I just wanted to add is that there is an online component. If you're looking, there is an online component in addition to that textbook.
Thank you. Mr. Sahu?
I'm just looking at this and I just have a quick clarification question. So I see that for the Krugman book for economics, that's like titled as an AP book, but for the psychology one, it's just labeled high school edition. Is that still up to par for the AP curriculum? I know that like College Board doesn't actually give out the AP name, so it's more of a titling thing by the publisher, but I just wanted to know.
It does. It does meet those requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to accept the Zern partnership in the amount of $37,500 funded by ESAR grants.
Any second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right. I move to approve the math empowered proposal as presented in the amount not to exceed $86,798 funded by the ESAR funds.
Any second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve the demonstrated success program in the amount of $43,500 funded by ESAR grants.
Any second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Ms. Brown headed the Committee on Human Resources tonight for Ms. Gilio.
So first...
Who was doing it for Miss Team.
So first, I'd like to move to suspend the rules since we met earlier this evening.
I'll move.
Can we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Darling. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
So, that's good. So the motion is to approve, excuse me, approve the personnel recommendations dated March 28, 2022 as presented. May I have a second?
Thank you for seconding, Ms. Darling. All those in favor of the personnel recommendations, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Okay, and we also have one more motion we brought for the committee this evening. Move that the board forms a subcommittee to organize a welcome event to introduce Mr. Linkus to the community and its stakeholders. Can I have a second?
Seconded.
All right.
Any questions, comments, discussion on this? So I have some concerns about this. As I stated during the Human Resources Committee, I think this is an overstep of what the board is supposed to do. The board is charged with approving the budget, creating policy, and providing an evaluation to the superintendent. I think when we start micromanaging people's daily tasks, what they're going to do and their agendas, we are not giving them the trust that they have been enlisted with as the superintendent. I think that what you guys want to do, which is have a gathering and a welcoming committee and have them meet with agency representatives for the community, is going to happen naturally. Having board oversight to do this, I think, is just a bit micromanagey and I will not be supporting this.
Okay. If I, can I speak to the motion?
Sure.
So I envision something actually bigger than just Mr. Linkus having the opportunity to meet with a few small stakeholder groups. I think of something more community oriented, teacher oriented, family oriented, where we can celebrate the fact that we are bringing someone new in to lead our district and also celebrate the fact that we've come together as a board, as a community, with a great deal of information so that we can do something positive and start everything off on the right foot. I think that we could present, Mr. Linkus would have an opportunity to actually maybe give a small speech. I don't know because I think the committee should be in charge of designing it. And we can maybe show off some of our students and their, some of the great things in our district, but I think also the opportunity to have a mingling. I actually would see something like an outdoor event at, I don't know, Stellows or Holman or something along those lines. It's actually more of a celebration and less of a one-on-one face-to-face. And I think...
Like a block party.
Like a block party, but I think it could really be a really wonderful thing for the community to do. And we could present our one employee. I think it would actually be something positive for the Board of Education to do, to show the, basically, I think it would be a good way to start off the district with Mr. Linkus.
Have you responded to his email about setting up a time to meet when he's here in Nashua next?
No, but I plan to. I would definitely...
Because he has some plans about how he wants to do some of the professional development at the beginning of the school year next year. He was going to review that with you during that meeting.
Well, that would be great if he would have known the last time he was here, if that would have been, let the whole board know that he was here.
Yeah. But it didn't.
Yeah.
Because he wanted to meet with me and then his staff. So he wants to meet with you guys next time around. That's why he sent out the email. And he can go over the plan that he has for the first couple of days of school, which has professional development, keynote speaker, introducing himself, doing kind of a teacher-wide meet and greet, and then he's going to figure out how he's going to get out there and meet with people in the community. Ms. Brown?
So I still support this. I still think this is a really great opportunity to present something to the community in a positive light. Instead of now, there's a lot of information that if there was one member of the board that had access to the information, if the rest of the board would have had access to the information, this motion may have been written differently this evening. And just to recognize that moving forward. Sorry, I think Ms. Johnson has a comment.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, in lieu of what you just said, none of us were privy to a lot of this information, which should have been shared with the board. When you talk about us micromanaging, well, what do you want us to do when we're not getting informa, you just divulged a whole bunch of information that I didn't know, Ms. Brown didn't know, no, Ms. Darling didn't know, people didn't know about this. And, not unless you did, Ms. Darling, because I'm looking at your face.
I don't, I feel like I remember someone telling me at some point that he was coming out, but I don't remember what the date was or anything else.
Yes. So I'm, anybody who called me, I told.
Well, why would we call you? Why am I going to pick up the phone and call you? I don't converse with a lot of board members during, because this is business and I don't mix business with pleasure and I keep it professional. I hang out with my friends or do what I want to do. But in lieu of all this, listening to this, I know we have a date coming up. We got times either 2 o'clock or 3 o'clock on the email.
No, that's for picking up the iPads.
Oh, okay, that's the iPads. Okay, so it's April.
7th and 8th.
7th and 8th. And I've sent back my information already, you know, what time. But that's great, he's meeting one-on-one, but we're not getting, the group isn't hearing about what he's planning to do, like you're telling us.
So I can't, I can't... I can't tell you guys in a daisy chain or as a quorum, information until we get into board meetings. So I was going to tell you that tonight. I can't individually call you guys and tell you the same information. If I don't call you, I can't tell you the meetings that I had.
How about point of order, like she's said three times now?
I can't hear Jess.
I think that you are mistaken in procedurally. You actually can inform the board through an email of something as long as we do not have a back-and-forth conversation about it. We cannot, we can, in fact, exchange public information in a quorum at any time as long it is informational. And it is my opinion that this would have been quality information to have. Now, I do think that we're off subject, but just to clarify, and I won't appropriate your comments, for a point of order, you can disseminate information as law, to the entire board as long as there is not a back-and-forth discussion on a future motion, just to clarify.
Okay, I think we've gone over this multiple times and we just differ on what is appropriate in regards to right to know.
Then I'd like to get a legal opinion. Then why don't we get legal opinions on this all the time? We don't. And we've got counsel sitting in Nashua that we can ask, so this is something that we could do legal pressure.
I can absolutely set up a meeting for us to have a right-to-know training, again, with Attorney Clay. I'll set that up for the next couple of weeks.
So my question is, if this motion was to pass, how would this be funded?
That was going to be my question, too. Yeah, what's the budget and where does the budget come from?
Well, that would be up to the committee. And we do, in fact, have a procedure for adding ad hoc committees. The board president can assign the members of the committee. We could also nominate members of the committee and leadership. It is actually a great procedure to use when you have something that's a heavy-duty piece of material to form a subcommittee to discuss it. I actually think it's one that we should use more frequently. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment. What I had said during the HR meeting, I want to make sure that everyone gets to hear. I'm not, or I haven't, at least until now, thought about it from a standpoint of trying to micromanage. To me, it has been about the fact that our community is so divided. We have been divided for so long. And the one thing that I know that gets people together are these big community family events. Get some food and get some vendors and show off the awesome work our kids are doing. And I don't know, I guess in my little hippie dreamer mind, it was an idea of the city being able to come together for something positive for once instead of another protest.
So I would count it out with, I agree, but I, let's let Mr. Linkus come up with what he wants his plan to be. Let's all meet with him the times that he's given to us, go over what his plans are. Maybe he already has something in mind and we don't need to micromanage him and let his leadership skills shine through.
So would you say that it would probably be smart for us to just leave this until after we've all met with him and talked to him?
Yeah. Let's see what his plan is.
I feel like that is a very reasonable suggestion.
Ms. Brown?
I understand the suggestion. I also do not think it would be advantageous for the board to wait until May 30 to make a decision to plan something for June 30 if we're thinking about even consideration of any kind of a large-scale event, because that is a huge undertaking for whether it's one person to manage, three people to manage, a district office to manage. So, there you go. Thank you.
I guess we will call the vote on creating a subcommittee in regards to a welcome and party for Mr. Linkus. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Nay.
No.
Nay.
Okay.
Motion fails. Two to four.
Okay.
That being said, I'll totally be bringing this up after talking.
Yes, yes, email him back, schedule a time to talk with him. Liaison reports, Ms. Gilio was going to give the JS BBC. I will do that for her. We did break ground on the new middle school, which is fantastic. We are ahead with the middle school projects and we are full steam ahead for finishing up whatever needs to be done in the rest of spring. She had a much more comprehensive written paragraph about this kind of stuff and that's my just willy-nilly, I was there. So any other liaison reports? Seeing none. Okay. So now we are into unfinished business, which we have none of, and going into new business. Dr. McKinnney, can you please tell us about the ever-awaited school year calendar? I know I already started looking at my April vacation for next year.
Yeah. District Office is getting phone calls. People are ready to book vacations, so we got to get this done. So let's just start backwards. So there's a House bill making its way through the House that limits the number of days of conflict that sending schools can have in a CTE center. So districts like Merrimack, Hudson, Litchfield, Milford, Hollis Brookline, we've been meeting since the fall around the calendar. So when we started, we had over 50 days of conflict. The proposed House bill says that by next school year, we have to have under 10. Right now, we're under 20. We're getting there. It's not easy. So the proposed calendar would put us in alignment with that and to share with the legislature that we're doing our due diligence and that the House bill wouldn't be necessary because the kids obviously miss out on days of instruction. So our calendar would eliminate the early release days. Usually our calendar has five to six early release days on months when there's not an in-service day. The calendar would have one additional in-service day that would be in September. And in conversation with the Nashua Teachers Union, half of that day would be for the district, And in conversation with the Nashua Teachers Union, half of that day would be for the district, the morning part, and the other part in the afternoon would be teacher choice for them to engage in PD of their choice. And then lastly, this calendar increases the amount of instructional time for kids by 14 hours. We also have more full weeks of school without interruption of the early release piece. The National Teachers Union shared an MOU today, so we're reviewing that because that piece, on that in-service day, all their bargaining units would work, so it would be a day of work. The kids just wouldn't be there that day. So teachers would be obviously engaged in PD, secretaries would be in the building. We would engage in PD for the parent educators and the food service workers would also get training to keep their certification up for Board of Health. So that's a lot there, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I just have a quick question about the 14 extra hours of instructional learning that we're going to be gained with this. So could those hours be used for, like, potentially to make up snow days? Or is that like hours gained in the classroom of like during scheduled days? Just one clarification on that.
So 14 more hours of instructional time. So if you'd like to learn less, don't come on those days. If you'd like to learn more, come those days. I think the whole piece around snow days and remote learning would have to be something separate that we discuss with the union and making some understanding, are we having traditional snow days? Or maybe at the high school level, we do have an online option, but that would be something we'd have to really think about and propose with the union. Because obviously, it looks very different for high school kids than a kindergarten student going home and being on, or preschool student being on an iPad or Chromebook.
Mr. Claffey? Okay. Do we have union consensus in regards to this new calendar?
I believe so. We have an MOU right now. Our side is reviewing it. They put it together. I think it was part of their meeting last week when they bet on the contract. So I think we're, we're close. We're just not over the finish line yet. But I do anticipate we'll have a, an MOU that we could present to the board for a vote.
Okay. But it's okay to vote on the calendar without that?
Yes.
Okay. I just didn't want to jump the gun and not have them be heard. Ms. Lamphier?
Yeah, I just had a question. Sorry. Early release days have, you know, been used for teacher in-service, haven't they? So since you're getting rid of all these in-service days, will that one additional day that you're giving the teachers make up for that? Will we really still have the same amount of time for?
So on this school year, we have 24 hours of PD time allotted during those days. Next year's calendar would be 18. The union has agreed to an MOU because the bargaining units, the four bargaining units will be working. To add any more additional in-service days would require a further MOU to amend contract language around the number of in-service days and the number of workdays. So this is kind of like a beginning first step to see how this goes, as well as if that House bill continues down the road and gets passed, and that would be in place for the following year. So this is a good first step. I definitely, we cut the number of conflicts in half for school days, but further in-service days would be subject to an MOU with the NTO.
Okay. I just, I just know that like, that's traditionally why early release days have been used, but I understand that you don't want to have the conflicts with the schedule of the other schools, so it does make sense. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy to report that with this calendar, we're not the district of conflict going forward. The other districts are. So if there are districts that have it in their CBA on these early release days, they're the ones that have the challenge of getting that out of their CBA, you're coming to an MOU to reduce the number of conflicts under 10.
Thank you.
Mr. Claffey, do I see your hand? No? Okay. So I would be look, Mr. Sahu?
Sorry, I hate to annoy you guys. I just wanted to comment on this. I completely understand and support why we're getting rid of these early release days. It makes total sense to me. But like, I just felt the need to mention that the district has, and I'm not in any way saying, telling anyone to not support, I think that we should, but I want members of the board to support this with the understanding that we have had early release days for as long as I can remember. And it's kind of been part of the culture of the district, the student culture, where, you know, some students can either look for, can look forward for once in a month, kind of a, almost as if it could be treated as a mental health day. And, or not a day that you would take off, but just a day that you'd have more time at home, a day to take it easy, catch up on work, spend time with friends and family. And I would just ask the board to consider an alternative measure, whether it be not, maybe it's something that's input in the calendar, or maybe not, something that could be talked with administration. But I do think that if we are going to go forward with this calendar, we should consider some option to take that, the mental health of students into account. That's all.
Yeah, I know my kids always get the early-release stomach bug that has no proof to it, just, I have to stay in bed, Mom. And I fault for it every time. Dr. McKinney?
I'm happy to work with the student reps and the high school principals. If there's something that the students are interested in that we can use those 14 hours or that relates to high school curriculum and instruction, but may not be as rigorous as a typical school day, like a crew day, a crew exploration, or anything in that regard, I'm happy to work any of those things out. Just know, this, this puts us in a place where we're, we're usually not, we have hours ahead of schedule before we get into the winter where we have these snow days. So you could almost have two less days of school and still meet the state requirement for instructional hours. That leads into some other challenges, but I hear what you're saying. It's challenging on the teachers. It's one of those things that, you know, some people love the early-release days and some don't. You're never going to get consensus. The bigger challenge would be if you were not to do this next, for next year, how do you come into compliance the year after and be under 10 days and get all those CTE centers? I think we're kind of lucky. The larger centers like Manchester and other places, the number of days of conflict are far north where we are. So we've, we've traveled a decent road to get to a fairly reasonable spot.
Yeah, that must have been quite the, as somebody who loves to make calendars and color code, even I wouldn't have wanted to have had to deal with this. Yes, Dr. McKinney?
As someone who doesn't enjoy those sort of things, I just want to thank Ms. Kinsella, who is very good at doing all those things and charts and graphs and colors and made it all happen behind the scenes. So thank you, Ms. Kinsella.
Oh, I bet. Yeah. All right. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the 2022-2023 school year calendar as presented.
I'm moved.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Darling. All those in favor of approving the calendar, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Calendar passes. Plan your vacations. I have until April 5th, and then my ability to reserve opens up, so got an alarm on my phone. The next part under new business is we have a policy for the board in regards to board member ethics that we're supposed to sign every year. We'll sign every time we have, yeah, every year. So I have copies of it here. We reviewed this in policy last year, was it? Was it last year?
March 8th.
March 8th, yep, 2021, we approved this. So if everybody wants to review the policy and then sign it and get it back to me by the end of the meeting, that would be fantastic. I'll pass two down this way. Does anybody have any questions about this? Okay. This is an old policy that's dated back to 2008. Do I have to say this? Nope. Thank you, though.
Nothing. Making faces.
So this is a double-sided, we have BCA and BCA-R. R is the one that we signed, and that's the one that will come back and will go back to district office. Yes, Ms. Brown?
So we, are we, we're just signing this? This isn't something that needs to be discussed through policy?
No, this is just our Board of Education member ethics that we're supposed to sign every year to acknowledge.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions? I know, I don't know if the new people have had a chance to look at, did you get a, did you guys get copies? Did I send enough down? Okay. So this, you know, it covers attendance policies, the governing board, what to do if you don't agree with a board decision after the fact, following policies and protocols, being respectful, following right-to-know, being up to date on current educational issues independently from here, support the employment of the persons best qualified to serve in their role, respecting confidentiality, that without a majority vote, we can't order anybody to do anything as, for the board, understand the chain of command, create effective policies and support the relationship with district administration, respect all board members, take no private action that will compromise the board or administration, demonstrate courtesy, present personal opinions and other board member comments concerning district operations directly to the superintendent, and we do not accept gifts or gratuities. Okay. So if everybody wants to sign that and send it on down, we can send it back to district office. Thank you, I can collect them at the, sign them and send them down. I have to sign off on them, too. And I will, I'll connect with Sandra and Sharon and Heather in regards to getting theirs signed. Do you want to hand yours down? Thank you. Okay, so second public comment period, we have Ms. King.
Are we having new business?
Are we done with new business? Yeah, that was policy BCA that we just finished.
I would have something I'd like to bring up in new business.
I'll wait.
Okay.
Sorry. No, it's okay. No, so I would like to make a motion that all board members be provided with a Nashua.edu email address if they request one.
Can you guys speak to that, or is that?
If I don't get a second, it doesn't matter, anyway.
I'll second just for discussion right now.
Thank you. I mean, I'm sure there's a reason that the new members are using their, that they don't have the.edu. I know you have to be careful when you email Mr. Claffey because it goes to his old teacher edu email. It still exists.
He's shaking his head, so that's between the two of you. I think the biggest concern from the administration is the right-to-know piece. So if the board would like edu addresses, it is on the board members to be in compliance with right-to-know requests and to either purge, delete, or retain their emails when a request comes. It is not the obligation of the administration to go retrieve them from the server and provide them. That's why the School Boards Association, and I believe, recommends a private email address, and it's on them to manage it. I just had a meeting today with my, the two administrative assistants, and we have an ongoing right-to-know request that is probably about halfway done. It's taken about 30 hours, and we probably have another 30 to go. So, you know, those sort of requests are a burden to the administration. So with that understanding, if there's something that the board is not getting in a timely manner, or if it's about the information received, the timeliness, we're providing iPads for electronic, trying to reduce the footprint and copies. I guess I'd like to know more about the nature and the cause for the request before advising anything further, but that's the main piece, is the right-to-know piece is a substantial burden.
Ms. Brown?
I'll tell you why I think it, we should, they should have one. I think there's multiple, I think it's, one of the primary things that we schedule, we struggle with in this district across the board is communication. I think that we, I think that there is something that adds to community confidence and professionalism if your email address goes back to the position and the job that you hold, opposed to JessicaBrown@gmail. That's not my email address, so don't send stuff there. But the, so I think it both lends confidence to our stakeholders and also adds an air of professionalism and responsibility on the board members to say, hey, this is not my personal email. This isn't an email just from me to Reagan. This is an email from, internally from the Board of Education. So I think it's very important, and I think it was, it just came to my attention recently that the new board members didn't get one when they signed up. That was actually the first thing I did when we had our new member orientation, was they set us up with our board email addresses, and I find it to be very appropriate.
I will say, I, in trying to respond to people that have emailed us, I have been asked if I was deliberately trying to hide things by responding with my personal email. And that's always kind of uncomfortable, but yeah.
Ms. Johnson?
I understand both sides of this, but I know that I was asked for a lot of information under the right-to-know law. I sent it out to Legal at that time, and he didn't get it. It got lost somewhere, and then they hounded me about it. But here's the issue that I have. I know that we can't, when it comes to us as a group, we can't answer because of the right-to-know law. There would have to be the president that would have to answer it. I don't have a problem with having the edu email, because if people send it to me in my personal email, I might never see it. I have this email, I have a personal email, and I have a business email. And it's hard to keep up with three emails. But I know every day, I need to come to this email to look, to read, and I can't get it to go to my personal. It's my personal. It's personal. They have my phone number, anybody can call me anytime they want on my phone or text me. I'm open to talk to them. But, and I think that I agree with Ms. Brown, we are a board, and this says a company name, basically. This is a branding edu. We're on the board. We ran for this. And if they email us, we can answer personally if it's addressed to us, if it's addressed to the board, then our president needs to answer. So then this way, it doesn't go underneath the right-to-know law, which we were told that we couldn't do. Thank you.
Dr. McKinney?
I would say the following three things. One, the communication challenges to and from and amongst this board is not something new, nor would be solved by an email address. Two, I would suggest that this go to policy and that there be an understanding of how the email is used and the right and the wrongs of using that email. Because, three, the concerns are, you're signing, literally signing a policy tonight saying you're going to follow the chain of command, yet you're going to be on the same domain where you can have emails coming and going through staff across the district, and the superintendent reserves the right to absorb those emails and review them when and if there are policy concerns or discipline action. So I, this is a larger piece that you just can't make a motion and make a recommendation. I think you should go to policy, pull the policy, get some legal advice, put something in place, but make sure it's being used properly. Because you, I would say you're pretty close in a legal jeopardy piece, and our staff has no tolerance. Is there something amusing you want to share? Are you a lawyer? No. The administration has no more staff or resources to absorb the right-to-know requests when board members misuse their email or don't comply with the request. So out of respect for the people that do laborious work in this realm and take legal advice to heart, I would send it to policy. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
I don't have a problem sending it to policy to review and make sure that if we're going to use the email, it's legal. We have, we can have Attorney Bolton, Attorney Clark review all this and make sure the policy is within the framework of legality.
Yeah, and that kind of pairs up nicely with Attorney Clay coming in and doing the right-to-know updated training for the new members. I know we've had it for us before, but the new members don't have it, so it kind of all lines up well. So you want to send it to policy?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay.
I will move, I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
So I would actually like to make a new motion. I move to send the issue of I move to send the issue of board email addresses at the edu to the policy committee.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor of sending a policy about board member email addresses, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
Oh, no.
Okay. Motion passes. Yes, Ms. Johnson?
So when we go to policy, if we feel that a policy needs to be changed, can we just bring it up in policy, or do we need to do it prior to?
So you want to, if you want to change a policy, do you just bring it to policy?
If we want, yeah. We just, if we read things, can we bring it, or do you want it to come here first or go under new business?
Well, I mean, with new business, it's always best to kind of update me about what you're going to bring forward, because it may be just an email to Dr. McKinney that I could have done for you. But if you're going to bring anything into the committees, get ahold of the committee chair. Say you want to put it on the agenda when they create the agenda, and then it'll be seen. We do have a policy that says if your chair continues to not put something on the agenda, you can then bring it to new business. But there needs to be like attempts to, you know, be denied on the agenda first. But I mean, always, if you have a question or something, you can call or email me, and then I can instruct the chairs that they need to take this up. But there is a policy that says that we can overrule chairs if you don't feel that your information's getting on the agenda.
Board, may I say something? Just referencing policy BEDB, actually, an agenda preparation dissemination, new business items shall be referred to the president by the, to committee by the president or with a majority of vote for analysis or recommendation. If new business item is time-sensitive, the board may vote to suspend the rules. So I think it, I don't think that you are accurate in your statement that it has to be denied by the policy chair first. Under our policy that we already have in place that was written on 3/29/21, was last time it was reviewed, we can actually send something directly to committee from new business.
I mean, it's, it's just nice to go through the chair first before you start throwing around requests for agendas, and then people can be prepared for whatever you ask for, and then we don't have to waste time in meetings if we can just go to committee. Any other comments? Ms. Darling?
So I was going to bring a motion forward about the, you know, a few weeks ago when Mr. Sahu had brought up the potential inequality in grading policies. Out of respect for our student representatives, I wanted to make a motion to have that policy looked at by the policy committee and hear from the administrations on how exactly that works. However, if it is best for me to go through Heather once she gets back, I can absolutely do that.
Are you talking about the GPA and class rank stuff?
The issue with the different, somebody help me out here.
With the weighted grades?
With the, I think Ms. Darling's referring to at the last full board meeting, when I referred to the discrepancy between the retake policies and recovery policies at the two high schools.
I think it would be worth a motion.
I was only going to bring it as a motion because Ms. Raymond is out for a couple weeks.
Yeah. I think Dr. McKinney said that he was going to chat with the principals about what their policies were and was going to deal with it as an administrative issue, not a board issue.
Yeah, I would, I would hope the board would do its due justice and look into the matter before throwing out motions. This is a challenging piece where, when competencies began, we allowed, you know, universal retakes for kids to improve their grade. It's become burdensome for some teachers, and after discussion with staff, yeah, do we have to get to a place where there's consensus? This is not a board matter.
Right.
This is another overstep, and this continues to be a challenge for this board. So if you would like me to look into matter and bring forth a recommendation and work with the student reps and the high school faculty, I will do that. But this is not within the purview of the board. As the president spoke, the board matters regarding policy, budget, hiring, managing, hiring, firing the superintendent, and discipline hearings as necessary. So this is beyond the purview. I think there's more information that many members here only have a glimpse into the matter. You know, and I've reached out and I've shared this with the student reps. I'm happy to engage with them and have a conversation. I've talked to Armani around having a presentation around the GPA class rank piece that's coming. But again, I'm just disappointed in the reach for a board motion so quickly without gathering more information. Thank you.
I think it's also, I mean, if we have the opportunity to put things on agendas, which is simply a phone call to whoever is running the committee, then we allow more time for people to come together for public comment. When we bring in new business and make motions with the board without presenting it to the community, we're, we're taking away the community's right to have participation within this stuff. So every time we bring new business that we could have put on the agenda, we're taking away the public's right to be able to participate in our meeting. So I mean, it's twofold. Not only do the people making decisions come to the meeting without prior knowledge, so they don't know how to answer your questions, but we're also silencing the public by not letting them know what we want to talk about. So I would fully support everything that you guys are asking for, but you just need to call me and let me know that you have these issues. I can vet them properly, and then we can address them in a more comprehensive and professional manner. Ms. Brown?
I think there's, there's two issues that I want to address right here because it's on, we're discussing it. One, I have been denied multiple times by policy committee chair and the, this president and the previous president by not making a motion during a meeting and just making the phone call. I'm sorry, there's not going to, I think that the fact that we don't be doing, we haven't been doing things in public enough is the problem that things get buried in this district. I think it reverts back to the communications issues that are ongoing continually.
Did I miss any phone calls or emails from you?
In addition to that, I actually would like to talk to Dr. McKinney. I actually disagree with you on, while I agree with you that we shouldn't be doing the minutia of enforcement of these types of policies, when it comes to approving the student handbook, when it comes to approving the policies that are in place, when it comes to approving the curriculum and the evaluation and the systems that we have in place, those are our jobs. And when we request more information or we request a review of a policy, that is worth sending to a committee and is worth a discussion, and it's worth educating the community as a whole in a public forum. So that's where I think my opinion disagrees, differs from yours.
Dr. McKinney?
Just for clarity, the student handbook is derived from policy, so they're not approved by this board, and that's been a misunderstanding for previous boards as well. Secondly, the board approves primary instructional materials, not all instructional materials that are used throughout the district. So that's also an area of misunderstanding. Again, if, if and when you would like an update on matters referred to administration, happy to bring it. Always deliver. It's like dominoes. Come here and I give the information. But to come into a meeting and bring it and try to set a motion right away without gathering all the information is not doing the due diligence, which the voters of Nashua expect from board members, not personal agendas. Thank you.
Ms. Darling? I'd like to respond to that. My original motion was that I felt that it was something that we should review to understand more. I thought that it being a policy, the policy committee would be the best place for it, and the policy chair being out, well, I thought this would be the best place to bring it up. I apologize if that is not correct, but my intention is to try to understand the policies better.
I appreciate that, but again, there's not a policy. I'm happy to bring forth a procedure. I've worked in districts where the grade book is managed by policy. It is very burdensome for the teacher. That's my end result.
Okay.
So if you want to put some best practices in place, we have amazing resources around competency ed that we can put in place for the high schools. But I think the challenge is, like anything else, how do you get high school teachers to agree on how many times kids are eligible to do a retake? Can it be from an A to an A-plus to an A-plus to an AA-plus? I mean, where's the ceiling and where's the basement? So we got to put some guardrails in there. Policy is more than, you know, the law of the land. This is more a procedural piece because there are going to be scenarios that are in the gray area, where kids come into circumstances and they're going to ask to take a retake because of a family life situation or they're out. Those are the soft spots that we have to accommodate in a procedure. So if you want us to ask around and find those sort of things, I think that's perfectly reasonable. Thank you.
And I just want to apologize if I am inaccessible to anybody. Please reach out, call me, email me. If I can't answer my phone right away, I'll text you back with the time that I'm available. But as president, I'm your go-to to the superintendent. So any concerns that we want to put on the agenda to review or get clarification about, feel free, if it's a question, feel free to ask Dr. McKinney. If it's something that you want to put on the agenda and you need some research and preparation for, call, email, text me. I respond to smoke signals as well, but my, my phone's never off, so. Are we done with new business?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. Ms. King? We will go into a second public comment now.
So can I take the whole 15 minutes? Sorry. So I'm Crystal. Everyone knows.
Actually, can you just do first, last address?
Live on Vermont Street. Okay. Yeah. So I am so glad that I said I have all the time in the world, because I would not have been able to think of this 94 days. And in case any of you are wondering what that 94 days means, it means 94 days until we're free of Dr. McKinney. So the reason why I came here and sat through all of this tonight, my son is no longer a member of the Nashua School District effective today. I called Dr. McKinney's office twice last week and left a message with his secretary twice. I also emailed Dr. McKinney because I didn't get a response. Oh, wait. It's now Monday night. At just about 10 minutes of 8:00 PM, I still haven't gotten an email response from Dr. McKinney. That's why it came. I've had multiple conversations about my son's behavior in his school and his educational needs not being serviced by the Nashua School District. I want to say, yeah, ever since he went to the specialized program, both with Mr. Parker, who I understand is out, and that's perfectly acceptable, he's allowed to be sick, because that was my first go-to, and then I was told he was out. So then I was like, oh crap, who do I go to? Dr. McKinney. Hmm. Who do I go to from there? Because I'm still waiting for a response. Anyway, I called and left messages, like I said. I emailed and left messages, like I said. I asked for a policy from Dr. McKinney on what the procedures and policies were on disciplinary things, for such things as like profane language, when my son got suspended from school last week. Still haven't gotten a response. I've lost faith in the Nashua School District. And honestly, Ms. Brown, I think you hit the nail, the head of the nail, or whatever the saying goes, right? Communication. Right? So it's just, my son's far from perfect, guys. Far from it. Like, he's assaulted many of your staff members, he's cussed many of your staff members out. I've cussed many of your staff members out. I made the necessary choice, right? So you guys can't help him. And I sat all weekend wondering what I did wrong, what I did as a parent, how I failed his educational needs as a parent. And then I thought to myself, I didn't do anything wrong. The school district did. By not responding, Dr. McKinney, you failed my son. That's what it is. And I can only hope that no other child has to go through it and going, oh no, I trust this teacher, I trust this person, I trust this administration, I trust this person, help me. And then face the harsh reality that that administration isn't even here for our students. You may boast and be all about, oh, well, there's got to be a ceiling, there's got to be this, you know, urge everyone to go and do everything that they possibly can, right? You mocked one of our board members. Good job. Professionalism is also a thing. I am sitting here shaking, and you can't even look at me. That's ridiculous. You're not a leader. You're not. You may have spent 30 hours and 30 more to go on a right-to-know request. That's fine. Sitting here saying, email me, you'll get a response. I did that. And I'm still waiting. 94 days.
Thank you, Ms. King. Ms. King, do you want to write your email down, and I can connect with you after? Yeah?
Here's the thing. I've really lost faith. If my daughter wasn't going to one of the top elementary schools in the state, we would not be here. We wouldn't be in this district anymore. It's been a mockery for the last two years. You have parents coming in, parents emailing, parents calling, and parents and students begging for you guys to help them, begging for it. Not showing up to class because they're getting bullied, right? Making passive or active suicidal like comments, right? And what are we doing for them? It's time for all of you in this room to open up your eyes. My son doesn't want to go to school here anymore. And if my daughter wasn't six and loved her teacher, she wouldn't want to be here. I don't want to be here. I'm still, I'm literally shaking, you can see. We have sat here and fought for our students. At the beginning of every single board meeting, you guys do a prayer, right? That you guys are tasked with helping these kids educationally, right? It's not just education. My six-year-old hangs on to every single word her teacher says. My six-year-old's teacher emailed me on a Sunday because she was worried about my kid because she had unlikely her behavior the week prior, right? And don't get me wrong, I've had teachers in the past email me about my son's behavior, like, hey, Julian seems like he's doing a really, having a really rough time. What can I do to help? I've also had teachers show up to his baseball games for the city, not in school hours. So the district as a whole, you got a couple of good eggs that I can see, but they are greatly overshadowed by the bad ones. So no, I'm sorry, Ms. Bishop, I do not want your email. I actually don't wish to communicate with anybody in this district. I really don't.
Okay.
But just open up your eyes and see what you're doing. You saw those, what, 10 New Searls kids today? I cried. Like, I almost started crying my eyes out. That was so adorable and so great. You know, I only wish, like, I'm sorry, I don't remember how to pronounce your name, the one in the blue, the student rep?
Sumay.
Thank you. You know, he said he wished he was in elementary school again. Same. You know? And it's not just that, but the world needs to be kind. You know, the world needs to show some appreciation. You know, the world needs to show some appreciation for what they have. I mean, like, yeah, in the beginning, I was that, I was that one, you know? When you guys all hired Dr. McKinney, I was like, yes, maybe we'll get something better. Two years later, I'm like, hmm, 94 days. Right? So, we really need to look at that. And I do think, by the way, I, I know that I'm not supposed to comment on things that the board does, but I do think that's a great idea about having the new superintendent have that block party. Because you're right, we do need something positive. And I feel like if we only had that for like Dr. McKinney when he came in, he'd be more personable, more approachable. It's just not happening. We need to figure that out. We need to do better for our children, especially some of you that actually have children in the school district. Our kids really need it, you know? My son doesn't want to go to school anymore, yeah, he's a teenager, but you know what? The kid's in love with math, just in love with it, could never do it. Major in psychology, but, uh, yeah. I appreciate you guys like sitting here and listening to me and like I can see some of your faces going, wow. But like, also like, you know, it's one of those things, you know? I appreciate the hard work that everyone here does. I'm not going to discredit that. But when you lead a district, and that goes for your board members too. You guys do, as much as you guys think you don't, you really do lead it, right? So, just got to do better. I know we got rid of the mask mandate, right? Like, we got rid of all that and, funny story. But I'm still here because I'm fighting for my kids and I'm fighting for my neighbors' kids and all of that jazz. So, just do better. Bullying's got to go, right? Let's not protect the bully anymore. And just, I don't know. I, I really don't. I really hope this, the new face of the district will be better, but my son's not coming back, unfortunately. I've lost faith in it, he's lost faith in it, and he's a special ed kid, like, that's a lot. Thanks, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. King. Okay. Thank you. The next, next up is board member comments. I'll go this way this time. Ms. Brown, you can go first.
My only comment is that I think we continually need to work on our communication in the district, whether it's email, face-to-face questions, and following procedures. Thank you.
Ms. Darling? I will never go into a meeting saying this one's going to be easy ever again. That's all.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. King, for coming in. I know you were the lonely rider tonight when everybody left. We've listened to your story for so long and I'm sorry that this has come to this. And I think for the last two years, all we did was focus on remote learning and masks. Masks were the topic of everything here. Parents came in, parents were begging. And some of us asked about what's happening with the bullying in the district. I'm now hearing not showing up for class. I got a call today about e-block that for a while, the students were roaming the halls and there were fights. And now they're restricted more. A parent called me today. I don't think either one of them is a balance, that students should be roaming the hall during e-block or that they should be restricted now. And I guess somebody there is agreeing with me or hating me for what I'm saying. I think this board in the next two years have a lot of work that we need to get done here. And I think the work is, I agree with Ms. Brown, communication is not the big topic here. We could communicate with masks because everybody says we couldn't have the, we had to have the masks, no matter what the parents were saying. It was this board's way or the highway. And it was not fair. It was always about the curve. The curve was about the deaths. We flattened the curve, but we didn't flatten the masks. And now we're reading studies about kids with emotional problems. And it's going to be a long way back for these kids. I hate to say it, I'm, I have to say that, and I've said it again and people hate me when I say this, that I'm a board member, but if I had kids in this district, I would think twice about it because of the way things happened here. Oh, we weren't perfect about the masks, but things did not work out. And people, we did not, again, talk about policies, talk about policies. There was no mask policy. There was no policy for kids that have medical exemption and religious exemption. And all they did was talk about it and talk about it and talk about it. And there's a reason why you have policies. And we're talking about this tonight. And you know what, Ms. Bishop? I'm not signing this. And you know why I'm not going to sign this?
The, the ethics policy?
That's right. I'm asking legal opinion on this. Because I think on this, on number 14, which I was not going to bring up, display and demonstrate courtesy and decorum towards fellow board members at all public meetings and all public statements. This was not followed for me and it rubbed off on these students at the end. And I was, when I was speaking about it, that screamed as, it's not about you, Mrs. Johnson. No, it wasn't about me, Mrs. Johnson. It was about that when people in the audience display disrespect to board members, that happened to me so many times here, being sent out, threatened with the police, how do you expect them to treat our students here? That they are younger than we are and they shouldn't have to put up with this like listening to Ms. King here. So, I will not sign this. I went to legal, I sent a copy, a picture of this to legal. I'm waiting for legal to get back to me whether or not I have to sign it. The people who did this to me really need to sign this and understand what decorum and professionalism is because the way I was treated last year with a disability, shame on everybody. Thank you.
Ms. Lamphier?
Ms. King, I believe in public school. I believe that every child has the right to education. And I'm so sorry that the public schools did not work out for your son. I just want to say that he's lucky to have a mom like you who takes the time to come to all these meetings and really cares. So, thank you.
Mr. Claffey?
First of all, I'm very happy with the way the email I set up during my campaign has worked. Dr. McKinney, your communication attachments, it's all there. Madam President, I think your communication's been excellent and responsive, timely. I have no complaints whatsoever. As far as the block party goes, I just think the new superintendent should be a part of that conversation, that's all, before we get into the nuts and bolts of it. I think it's a great idea, just think, maybe best to wait. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, call me, email me if you guys need anything. I'm flexible. I don't really have any comments. I just want to say, if you are not going to be signing the code of ethics policy, just let me know. If you could email it to me, if you're going to chat with legal, if you want to include that to me, because if it's something that we need to reevaluate in policy and amend, amend it, that would be fantastic. So, if you get information that we are not privy to, just share it with me so we can update it appropriately. And I want to thank our students for coming. You guys are always fun to have around. And thank you, administration, for coming out, putting together the agenda, putting together the massive packet of information that we have. I think that was all you, Mr. Donovan, every single piece of that. So many numbers. I love Jimmy laughing. It's my favorite part of the day. All right, so our next meeting is Monday, April 18th. I will be meeting with Dr. McKinney the week before to set up the agenda, so if anybody has anything that they want me to add, my phone number and my email are on the website. So, give me a call if you don't have it in your phones already and we can properly have the agenda set up for you. So, I would be looking for a motion to adjourn now.
I'll move.
Okay, on the motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We are now out of our meeting at 8:06 PM.